There we go. And welcome to the 1,165th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons, all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the planning commission will make recommendations to the city council. And the city council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plats and/or vacating petitions. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to the city council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petition will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. Resolutions that are adopted by the city planning commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The planning commission and the professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. Our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
This is Smiley.
President.
Mrs. McQ.
Here.
Mr. Banjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Present.
Mr. Vittro.
I'm here.
Karen Magnos here, Chairman Woolshop.
Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina, Stephanie Reese, Scott Miller, and I believe that is it from the planning department. And they will be helping us along with the meeting and giving background information on these petitions. For our audience's benefit, the way that we're going to run the meeting tonight is we're going to start by announcing each item on our agenda. Our staff will give some background information on it and read any correspondence that we have. Then we'll ask that the petitioner use their raise hand feature within Zoom to let us know that they're in the audience so that they can address us and answer any questions or add any additional information to that item. And then if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against the petition, we'll have an opportunity for our audience members to also address these petitions and speak to us about them. So we'll sort of prompt you along as we go. And with that, we're going to start with item number one on our public hearing section of our agenda.
And that is petition 2021-01-02-01 submitted by Stein Investment Company LLC, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section 11.0103X of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number 543 as amended to develop and operate a climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility at 31100 Plymouth Road located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Sears Drive and Merriman Road in the southwest quarter of section 26.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magnos, Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to develop and operate an indoor self-storage facility. This is the site of the former AT&amp;T building, which is on the north side of Plymouth Road, just east of Merriman Road. And as you can see from the map, the zoning of the property is C2 general business, which treats indoor self-storage facilities as a waiver use, subject to 11 special requirements. The site is 4.9 acres in size. It has 738 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. There's an existing building on the site that has three levels and a gross floor area of 114,000 square feet. Following the departure of AT&amp;T from this building, it has mostly sat vacant. This redevelopment proposal involves the westerly three acres of the site, including the building. The remaining easterly portion, which includes mostly parking, is not a part of this project and would be reserved for future development. To the west, to the east, and south are commercially zoned properties, and then lying immediately to the north is property still owned by Michigan Bow AT&amp;T, was part of their regional switch and hub. That property is owned M1. The existing building is somewhat unique in that it contains, it does not contain a floor at grade level. The finished floor elevation of the middle level is over six feet above the surrounding ground elevation, and the lower level is about five feet nine inches below the ground. Each floor plate is roughly 38,000 square feet in size. Self-storage units would be on all three levels of the building. The total number of units would be roughly 700, and these would be of various sizes. Customer access would be from within the building. There would not be any exterior doors or roll-up doors, that is. Converting the building for the new use is going to require extensive reconstruction. There would be an elevator tower with two elevators built on the north or the rear side of the building. A small addition would be built at the northeast corner for use as a leasing and service office. These additions total about 1,050 square feet, which would increase the total floor area of the building to about 115,229 square feet. The required front yard building setback in the C2 district is 60 feet, and this building contains a non-conforming setback of 53 feet. So the expansion of the building is going to require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. All loading and unloading would take place at the rear of the building. This would be accomplished by creating two ramped access points, one to the lower level of the building and the other to the middle level. For the lower level, the ramp would be about 30 feet wide. It would allow for two lanes that would descend on both sides to a covered landing area and an entrance to the elevator tower. And I'm just going to show everyone where that is on the site. So the elevator tower is located here, and this would be in addition on back of the building. The landing area that I mentioned for the ramps is located here, and these gray areas depict the ramps. So on each side of this covered area in the elevator tower, these would be ramps that would go down below to the elevation that is equal to the lower level of the building. Then there would be access to these elevators that would then provide access to all three levels or the upper two levels of the, of the building. The canopy above the landing area on the lower level measures about 35 feet by 29 feet, and it would cover both drive-through lanes, as you can see. For the middle level, there would be a ramp going up that would be located between the building and the lower level access ramp. So that area is located here. So the ramp that goes to the middle level is between the lower level ramp and the building itself. This ramp would be about 19 and a half feet wide and would contain a level platform at the top with access to the elevator tower. Unlike the lower level, the upper level ramp is not a drive-through, and the upper platform is not large enough for vehicles to turn around. Thus, vehicles would either have to back up the ramp and exit moving forward or drive forward up the ramp and then exit backing down. Like the lower level, the upper level ramp would be covered by a canopy. In terms of parking for the proposed use, the site plan shows only 13 parking spaces, which would be along the east side of the building. The ordinance does not provide specific parking requirements for self-storage. Instead, parking is based on the recommendation of the planning commission. The existing stripe spaces on the west side of the building and behind the building would be removed in order to increase the amount of landscaping, as well as to allow for adequate maneuvering paths for trucks and other vehicles. Jump to the exterior. So the exterior of the existing building is mostly brick. There's a series of EPAS panels that run along the top of the building. Those are shown here in this rendering. The elevation plans show the brick remaining on most of the building, and the panels on the top would be replaced with new EPAS. At both ends, there would be EPAS that would either cover or replace the brick, as well as fiber cement board panels. The same combination of materials would also be used to accent the central feature, which currently serves as the building's main lobby. So just to go over this, and I'll go to a different rendered elevation. So this is the front of the building facing Plymouth Road, and the brown area shown on the rendering represent the existing brick material. These are the EPAS panels along the top that would be replaced. And then, as I mentioned, at both ends, there would be new features that would consist primarily of, or a combination of EPAS and these cement fiber panels. EPAS would also be provided along the central portion of the, of the building. This is the, the central feature, I'll just call it. This served previously as the main lobby, and the glazing here would, would remain, and this would be used primarily for display purposes. Fully detailed landscape plan is provided with the application. There have been some minor changes to that plan. Commission should have the latest. This is the latest plan that was presented, only minor changes involving some of the plant material, mostly along the front of the building. In terms of signage, this has not been reviewed, but the ordinance would allow for one wall sign not to exceed one square feet for each foot of building frontage. So we haven't computed exactly what that would be. They're showing on their renderings more than one sign, so that is something that would require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Additional signage would be allowed in the form of a monument sign that would be limited to 30 square feet. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have or go directly to the correspondence.
Sure, you can read the correspondence.
Thank you. So we have several letters from city departments. The first is from the engineering division dated February 4th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The proposed project parcel is assigned the address of 33110 Plymouth Road. The existing building is currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer, as well as private storm sewer. The developer has been in contact with this office regarding engineering requirements for the proposed project, and we do not believe there will be any impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that the developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Michigan Department of Transportation should any work occur within the Plymouth Road right away." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated January 29th that reads, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct a commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. The Livonia Fire Department Fire Inspection Division is requiring that this structure provide complete fire sprinkler protection on all levels as highlighted in National Fire Protection Administration NFPA Life Safety Code 2015 and the standards for the installation of sprinkler systems NFPA 13 of 2013." That letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated January 28th and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated February 22nd that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted. Number one, a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required to expand an existing non-conforming building. Number two, the parking lot shall be repaired, replaced, and restripped as necessary. Parking spaces shall be 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep and double striped. Three, this space must meet all current barrier free codes. This will be addressed at the time of plan review if this project moves forward. This department has no further objections to this petition." Now, letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter from the Department of Finance dated February 3rd that reads, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. There are no past due amounts receivable. However, your water bill of $236.60 is currently due on February 10th. I have no objections to this proposal." And that letter is signed by Connie Cumplia, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Department or the Office of the Treasurer dated February 3rd and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And that is the extent of the correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions over the planning commission for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Dave, Mr. Banjero.
A question for Mark. Mark, on Jerome Hannah's letter, he, is he just stating a generalization of variance from the ZBA would be required to expand an existing non-conforming building? Or is that, is that because of the front setback, or is there something else with this building that's not conforming?
Yeah, no, it's, it's only because the existing building is non-conforming, and even though the, the expansions, as shown, would not increase the non-conformity, because it, because the existing building is not conforming, it requires a variance. That, that has been a longstanding policy of, of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banjero. Any other questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
I'm a Smiley.
Yes, are we, is the PRDA still looking at, at buildings on Plymouth Road when they're, like, this one's being repurposed and redone?
Yes, they are. They have not reviewed this project yet.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions?
Yeah, and if I could just qualify that or just expand on that response. They don't typically look at the use as much as the improvements to the site as it affects the frontage along Plymouth Road, which is, and which is their primary concern. The aesthetics, including landscaping primarily, is, is what the PRDA focuses on. I'll just, I'll mention that. So there will be an opportunity for this, for this item to, to go before the board, but unfortunately, we were unable to take it prior to this evening's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions or comments for our planning staff? If not, our petitioners, I believe, are in the audience. If anyone representing this petition can click raise hand, I will try to unmute or recognize each of you, and then you can speak at appropriate times. We have Mr. Butler. Mr. Gaber, Mr. Lynn Scott. There we go. If there's anyone else, you can click raise hand. I think I got all of you. Let's see, there we go, Mr. Butler. Okay, who is our representative? We have Mr. Lynn Scott. Are you representing the petitioner tonight?
Yes, I am. I'm here. This is Jason Lynn Scott, and I think John Gaber's on as well.
Right.
And he was going to lead us off, I think.
Okay, great. So the way we work here is we'll ask that you start with your name and business address for our minutes. So, Mr. Gaber?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission. It's, it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to be in front of you this evening, and we appreciate your time. My name is John Gaber. I'm the attorney for the applicant. My address is 380 North Old Woodward, Suite 300, Birmingham 48009. And, excuse me, Mr. Butler, who's on the phone, is our civil engineer, and Mr. Lynn Scott is with Stein Investments, the, the applicant. And essentially, we appreciate the presentation. It was very thorough. Mr. Toramina gave on the site and what the proposal is for the redevelopment. And what I'd like to do is to turn the floor over to Mr. Lynn Scott to give a little bit of information about, you know, about Stein and its ventures with RCG Ventures to, to create these redevelopment projects in other communities and to show you what we've done and essentially say a little bit more about what we're proposing here. So, Jason?
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Good evening, good evening, everyone. You know, it's Jason Lynn Scott with Stein Investor Group. Address is 5607 Glen Ridge Drive in Atlanta, Georgia, 30342. I know we went over this last week. I just want to make sure I am respecting your time and doing what you guys would like me to do. Should I give sort of this similar presentation as last week?
Yes, please. If you would like to just start off by letting us know sort of what, what your intended use of this property is, why you believe this is a good use, and once you're done with your presentation, we'll see if we have any questions for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So the intended use for this property, as you guys see it on the screen, is, is for interior climate-controlled self-storage, and this is a consumer product. So these are an average of 10 by 10 units. So these are, these are, you know, residential use interior self-storage units. As, as, as Mark so eloquently went through on the, on the entire coverage of the plan, this is an existing office building. It's a little awkward. It's, at least in my career, it's the first building I've ever walked in an office building where there is no floor at grade. So it's kind of an odd, an odd duck here. As, as he said, when you walk in the door, it's a bit like walking to a split-level home. You walk in, you immediately have to go either down a set of stairs or up a set of stairs to either the basement floor or the middle level floor. And then, of course, there's a third level floor as well. So it's a three-story building. It was vacated by AT&amp;T maybe four or five years ago, and it's sort of just been vacant since. We, and I'd like to just, if I could backtrack for just a moment, just to give you some background on us, so you kind of understand why we chose this site and why we, we kind of approach the project the way we do. We are a family-based real estate company in Atlanta. We do real estate projects, develop and own real estate projects throughout really sort of east of the Mississippi. So we're in the southeast, mid-Atlantic, and Midwest. That's Ohio and Michigan in the Midwest, and then over towards the mid-Atlantic and Virginia and Carolinas, and then, of course, all over the southeast as well, then being centered in Atlanta. We primarily do self-storage and retail. Those are kind of our two primary products. We actually started off as retail, mostly in retail, and maybe, I don't know, 11 or 12 years ago, started developing self-storage and really took a different approach at it. We were retail-minded folks, so sort of took more of a retail angle at it, where we, we really addressed what we thought the consumer would want. We sort of see it as a retail product. Our customers are the community members. So this isn't a traditional, you know, you build a shopping center and you have a tenant, which is a business. You know, we are the operator here. The brand here is called The Space Shop, and that's our brand, so it's our management company. We, we own and operate these facilities ourselves with our platform. So we, we like to think we're, we're pretty good at it. I'll pat my operations guys on the back, but we, we take care of how we operate them, we take care of how we develop them, and we take care of how we look for the right product and the right market. And this approach, we have done many times over the years. We've done a little over three and a half million square feet of this type of self-storage product, and I would, about half of those have been building, I call them building conversions like this one, and we've used buildings, everything from office buildings to bowling alleys and Toys R Us's and K-Marts, movie theaters, that type of stuff. So, you know, as you guys probably are well aware, you know, bricks and mortar retail and other types of real estate is changing dramatically with the internet, and things kind of just continue to keep accelerating. So these, these, there's, there's a lot of buildings like this that are somewhat functionally obsolete in various ways, and from office buildings to retail buildings. We take an approach when we look for self-storage where we really start with markets. We look at, we have sort of a pretty methodical analysis on how we look at supply saturation, and I don't want to geek out on it too much, but it's, it's basically a process where we look at the demographics of an area, understanding the type of housing, the type of traffic patterns, the type of community that you have, and then we overlay that with the sort of trade area competitive maps, and we look at other self-storage facilities. We, we call all of them. Generally, it's a, it's funny, it's a pretty small industry. We all sort of know each other, so we'll call and everybody sort of check on each other and see, you know, how you doing here, how you doing there, what are rates like, and sort of understand what the saturation level is, so to speak, because we don't want to, we don't want to invest all this money in a, in a market where the product, there's not enough demand for our product. So we take a lot of pride in that process. In this particular area, you, you would normally expect to find something in the seven or eight square feet per person in a trade area such as this. This trade area has about five square feet per person, including this project. I would always include our project in it if we're looking to build one. So it's, from a market supply standpoint, it's in a net demand scenario, and, and further, there's actually less than two square feet per person of climate-controlled self-storage, including this project in the trade area. So there's, there's good demand for this type of product in the market, and we've had a lot of success with it, and customers really like our, our brand and kind of, and the product that we, we provide. This, this site really sets up well for self-storage also because it's, it is mid-block, which is challenging for some types of real estate uses. For example, retail is pretty difficult sometimes mid-block, particularly since this site is surrounded by industrial uses. So this is a really nice use for this property. That said, there's a, there's also a great opportunity with repurposing a building like this that formerly needed a lot of parking. So we're able to repurpose this building, and as Mark mentioned, we don't need all the parking for this use. We have provided some parking on the east side of the building, which I believe is 13 spaces. I'm blanking here for a second. I believe it's 13 spaces, which is actually probably 50% more than we even need. Customers only visit those, use those parking spaces when they visit the office to do their initial lease and, and tour the facility. After that, they're always in the back of the facility, either loading or unloading. So those parking spaces don't, don't generally get used a ton. So what it does is it sort of unlocks the east part of this site. If you saw, if, I don't know if you could flip back to the site plan with the color. Yeah, there we go, thank you. The east side of the site on the right, where the blue box is, that's the parking field now that's just sort of sitting vacant. We're able to now activate that with something else. So it could be an office use, it could be freestanding restaurant or something like that. We'll, we'll sort of see, have to see how it goes, but it's, it's a nice way to kind of unlock the piece of property that really is captive parking for the office building. And of course, there's an office building that's, that's, that's kind of functionally obsolete based on some of the things we talked about before. So it's a, that's, those are some of the ingredients that come together and why we, why we chose this site. I have some before and after kind of pictures in here of some of our other conversion projects, just so you can get a flavor of the type of projects we do. I just would like if you could visualize it, and I think that's in here. Yes, thank you, great. So this is, for example, and I'll go through these really quickly because I know you've seen some of these. This was a car dealership, which you can see, and if you flip through, that's, that's the after. So after we did our conversion of it, this particular city here wanted this to look like a retail shopping center on the left. So that was kind of the, the goal for what they wanted us to accomplish here. And, and you'll sort of see, generally, we, we are working with the community and trying to make it work within the community. We don't have a particular box that it has to look like. This one is actually a former Kmart near Charleston, South Carolina. That's what it looked like afterwards. And again, I'll just kind of point out with that, with this one, the buildings, once we're finished with them, they look purpose-built, so it, it doesn't look like a converted Kmart. You know, a lot of guys will do that, and we've seen it before. They don't succeed. Customers don't feel good about it because it looks like you're going into a broken real estate deal, you know, and somebody just put a new sign up. So the, the objective is always that it looks like a purpose-built deal. No, no one would ever know that that wasn't built as a self-storage facility. And then I'll go through the next ones really quick. Thank you for doing these. So that's a bowling alley, and you sort of see, we, this is kind of a more modern look that the city wanted here with this building. And the next one, I think, is an old office building, so it's a similar condition to, to this one, you know, that turned into this. And you can see sort of how dramatic the difference is on this one. You know, it was, really looks like a purpose-built building now instead of this office building. And then this was just kind of an old dumpy facility that we redid with brick and put a parapet on it and sort of really modernized it. So hopefully that just gives you a quick, oh, there's one more, sorry. This was a, a single-level, it was an old furniture store that somebody had done. Love it that climatized was spelled wrong on the roof, but yeah, we anyways, made this more modern, and this is sort of in conjunction with what the city was looking for too. So hopefully that just gives you a visual of what we try and accomplish with these buildings. It's definitely not a just slap some paint on it and put a sign on it kind of approach. And if you go, want to go on our website, you can look at all of our other projects. There's plenty of photos on our website, which is spaceshopselfstorage.com. And you'll see all of our brand-new ground-up ones, plus all these building conversion ones that I just showed you. So that, that's kind of the intent of it, and this is a, this is a rendering of the And this is a, this is a rendering of the property. The, what we're doing here is replacing all the landscaping in the front, sort of creating some rhythm to it. And then the glass that is, let's see, best way to describe this, the vertical pieces that are sort of gray. Yep, thank you. Those are partially glass and partially, I believe, metal now, metal or eph, or ephes. And those, we're going to pull those out. The glass right now is, i- it's just old. It's an old glazing. It sort of looks 20, 30 years old and needs a lot, they need a lot of work. So our intention here is to pull the glass out and replace them with the same rhythm with these ephes and fiber cement board panels. And what it, what the fiber cement board panels are, are like a wood look with a wood grain. It's a product called Nichiha, if you guys are familiar with it. It's a really nice, it looks like a wooden board with wood grain and really looks nice. So it's not a smooth, kind of boring lap product. It's a really upscale wood grain product. And that's, and that's the gray, and that's the gray on the ends too, on those large columns on the corners. That's the same material. It's that lap wood siding. So it really dresses up the building. And then in the middle, with the glass lobby area, we're actually removing the existing glazing and glass that's there now and replacing it with new, more modern storefront. The same, see that gray band in the middle between the floors is the same wood, wood product or fiber cement, but with wood grain product to just sort of modernize the building and upgrade it. Those doors that you see there are not operating doors inside the building. We generally don't like to have operating doors in front of glass like that. It, you know, because you'll have customers sometimes loading or unloading. So those are really meant to, they look like they're operating doors. They're not operating doors. It's really just so when folks drive by, they, they know what the building is. And they see that there's storage there, and they understand that it's inside. So it's important sometimes, particularly when you're changing the use of an existing building that people are used to seeing, that they know that it's, that it is something new. So that's, that's what's going on there. And then, yeah, thank you for that. On the right, we will have the office. And it might be easier if you wouldn't mind switching back to the colored site plan. Yeah, thank you. So that, yeah, that square up at the top right is an existing sort of lobby. It's pretty small, but it's really, it's really kind of works well for office. You see there's a line through the middle of it, kind of at an angle. That's actually an overhanged roof that we're going to infill with new storefront there. So we're going to kind of, kind of complete the square there. And that'll be our, our leasing office. So that's where our customers will come to. All the loading and unloading to the building occurs at the rear. Yep, on the north side of the building. So all of that happens behind the building. So it won't be visible from the street. And the customers are sort of protected from, from traffic and it, in traffic from visibility, which makes folks feel better, honestly, when you're back there loading and unloading. The, the sort of pink areas you see are actually, the lower part is a, is the roof for the elevator and the lobby that you walk into. The one with the X on it is actually a roof. So that covers the loading area underneath. We'll have lighting and heat, heat there so that when you drive in there, you can load with, with a little bit of heat and underneath, underneath the roof. So the, and, and the, in the top side, you see that little color blank, band with yellow and pink and yellow and pink. That's a landscaping strip. We really want to make sure that looks nice up there. It's not just sort of hard, hardscape materials to hardscape materials, you know, concrete and asphalt and those kinds of things. So that's a landscape strip to hopefully soften that up a little bit. I think that kind of basically explains the building. One more, a couple, one more thing I know that we spoke about last, the last meeting. The, the traffic here generally is consumers with their SUVs and trucks, that type of thing. It's, it's not, we don't get very many 18-wheelers. Kind of joke, it'd be nice if we did. I mean, that's certainly a lot of storage units if someone comes in an 18-wheeler. And they do from time to time, but it's not very often. So generally, that's, that's how it's set up is for those customers, residential customers. So hopefully I answered all your, sort of the questions from last time. And I'm happy to answer any other questions if there's anything I left out.
That's a great presentation, Mr. Lynn Scott. I appreciate that. Is there any questions from any of the planning commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley.
Yes, I was wondering what kind of stuff is storage and what precautions you take so there's not hazardous materials or weapons or explosives or anything like that?
Yeah, it's a good question, Ms. Smiley. We, you know, it's a, it's definitely something we have to be careful of in the industry. And it's basically our leases, of course, prohibit anything dangerous or flammable. And our manager, when you, when a customer signs a lease, goes over that with, with the tenant. You know, you can't store anything that could be, you know, like you can't store anything with any kind of flammable material in it. So like gasoline or anything like that. Also can't store certain items like tires, even though they're not necessarily flammable. There's just items we don't want people to store, you know, in the facility. So the manager goes through that with every customer. And then basically what we do is, you know, the manager keeps an eye on the property. We'll have two, two employees here that work every day during business hours. So they're pretty aware of what's going on, what's going in and out of the, the property. And then the managers do daily site walks constantly. So they're walking the property to just sort of observe and see what's going on, see what people are moving. They talk to the customers. We'll bring waters out to people, and you just sort of create a relationship and see what people are doing. And then the facility has cameras at every entrance and exit, inside and outside. Customers are aware that we, we know what's going in and out of the property. And if they're not okay with that, we don't really want them to, you know, be leasing. So it's a, and it's a secure facility. So every, I should have mentioned that, every entrance is, has a keypad. So if you're, the only way to get in is to have your own key, your own PIN number that you would enter in the keypad. So we know who's coming and going. There's, there's lighting and security at every entrance and inside the facility. And that's sort of the, how we approach it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bonjero?
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the elevation, you show a mix of brick, ephes and cement fiber. Some of the ephes extends down to the grade. In the northern states up here, you know, we found through the years that that doesn't fare very well. So have you considered, or would you consider putting cement fiber at grade level?
Yeah, thank you. That's a good question. And I don't know that it shows it real well. The, the, the ephes won't touch the ground. Where, where wood, there would be concrete or any kind of, we actually just talked about this with our architect. It, it won't touch the ground in any situation. They'll either be concrete there or we may extend the brick to make it sort of a brick. I don't want to say water table because it would be very high, but use the same kind of brick color too. So there's a few ways we would accomplish that. But agreed, and we, none of the ephes will be touching any sort of earth material.
Okay, thank you. And then I think it came up last week, just, we kind of threw it out there about using spandrel glass?
Right, right. So we've done that before, and it's, you know, it makes sense. Where we've, when we have a lot of it like this, we haven't liked the way it turned out. It generally looks sort of like, the building sort of has a blank stair about it. There's no, nothing going on. It's always dark. It just sort of looks closed. So we've worked on different ways to do it, and we've liked this look where we create an element that creates the same repeating pattern of the windows. And it just, I'm trying to think if any of these have that same example. It looks nice. It has the different materials and creates, creates that same pattern. But this one, this is an example. Actually, if you, if you wouldn't mind, go back to that one, if possible. Thank you. Yeah, and this one, you see on the right, that's the office. So we have glass at the office in this one, and then glass in the middle when you walk in. And then on the left, we have the same sort of repeating patterns that occur. So we did this, approached this one a little differently, but it has a nice look to it, and it looks a little warmer than just sort of a black glass that looks like the lights are off all the time and it's closed, which is kind of how we've experienced it in the past.
I understand. Okay. Okay, thanks. That answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other commissioners with questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions. Mr. Lynn Scott, just one quick question. Is the facility going to be open 24 hours a day for customers? Or will they only be able to access their units when staff is there?
So it is not open 24/7, but, but customers can access it without staff being there. So generally, we are open 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, meaning your keypad will work between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. If you come to the facility after 10:00 PM, it just won't allow you access. So just over the years, we've, we've discovered that people just don't need access to their units at 2:00 AM.
That makes sense. I think that happens after 11:00, right?
That's right. But the store hours where the manager's there are general business hours, so 8 to 6 type of hours.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, any other questions from any of our commissioners for the petitioner? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? If so, you can click raise hand and we'll recognize you to speak. I don't see any hands popping up. So if there is no further questions, I will close the public hearing on this and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley.
Okay, I would like to make an approving resolution that the request to develop and operate a climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility at 31100 Plymouth is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval and the following conditions. That the site plan identified as C-3.0, prepared by PEA Group dated January the 21st, 2020, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the landscape plan identified as L-1.0, prepared by PEA Group dated January 21, 2020, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sotted in lieu of hydroseeding. That the underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscape and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. That the exterior elevation plans identified as A-2.1 and A-2.2, prepared by Kevin J. Maher, AIA, both dated January 12th, 2021, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except for the fact that on the lower portion of the exterior of the building, all ephes material shall be replaced with either masonry brick or cement fiber plant panels. That, okay, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible, compatible character material and color to other material, exterior materials on the building. That this site shall meet either the City of Livonia or Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and shall secure any required permits, including soil erosion and sedimentation control permits. That the use of self-storage facility shall be limited to the storage of personal and business items only, and no unit designed or intended for storage purposes shall be used for operating a business or recreational activity, including but not limited to repairs, manufacturing, assembly, personal service, hobby, retail or office. The outdoor storage of vehicles or equipment, including work trailers and trucks, is strictly prohibited, and that there shall be outdoor storage of disabled, that there shall be no outdoor storage of disabled or inoperative equipment and vehicles, scrap metal, debris and other similar items. That the hours of operation for the indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility shall be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, as proposed by the applicant, subject to City Council approval of a modification of special requirement 11.03X6 to extend the operating hours from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The entire buildings and property shall have a camera's security system in place in key code access. That any additional pole-mounted light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height in all light fixtures, including the building-mounted and wall-packed units shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray lighting trespassing across property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadways. That any facilities that, for the outdoor storage of refuse shall be screened by means of an enclosure constructed of masonry walls. The enclosure gates shall be solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall always be maintained and when not in use, closed. And only conforming signage is approved with this petition. That no window sign shall be allowed. That no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building and around the windows. That unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers or sponsored vehicles designed to attract attention of passing motors shall be prohibited. That the specific plans referenced in this approval resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time of the building permits are applied for, and pursuant to section 19.10 of ordinance number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of the approval by the City Council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. I do have one question. Up here at the beginning, those plans are probably January 21st, 2021? Is that right, Mark? Like item number one?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm sure that's the case.
And number two, it says January 21st, 2020. It's probably 2021.
Yeah, we'll, we'll correct the dates. In fact, we received some new information, specifically the landscape plan. So we might have to change that date as well. But yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, because it's 2021 down at number five, so. Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Smiley. That was quite the, quite the petition to read out. Is there support for the motion?
Mark, Mark's got a hand up.
No, I'll wait for support.
Yeah, let's get support.
Support.
All right, I'm going to go with Mr. Ventura on that one. It was kind of a tie. Mr. Toramina?
On condition number 15 related to signage, we did, we should have added, we should have indicated that, that only con, signing, conforming signage is approved with this petition unless approved by the zoning board of appeals. So we, we failed to include that language. So if they, this, that, that way, they're not prohibited from seeking a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Because we do note that, or we did note in our analysis that it would appear they're, they're proposing more than one sign on the building, which will require a variance.
Okay, that's pretty standard verbiage for us to put in our motions.
Yes, it is.
Mrs. Smiley is maker. You're, you're okay with that?
Yeah, and I just have one more thought. At the study meeting, we talked about the flagpole. I would really like the flagpole to remain in good shape for the US flag out in front. They agreed to that back then. Do we need to put that in the proposal?
Mr. Toramina, I'm trying to think if we've had flagpole provisions in our, in any of our motions in the past.
I, I will, I will say that it's shown on the rendering, and, and they did say that it was, that it was something that they were going to keep. So I don't have a problem adding that if they, if they don't.
We, we can make it part of the landscaping plan, right?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, also on number 11, did he say that their hours were going to be 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM?
Mr. Lynn Scott, can you clarify the, your opening hours?
Yeah, I said, I, I did say 6:00 AM. Yeah, you're right. So, yeah, thank you. I think in our petition though, we had revised the hours to 7:00 AM. So I, I misspoke.
All right, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good, good, good question. Any other comments on the motion that's on the floor? Questions, comments, thoughts? If not, we do have a motion to approve this item. If the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura, I'm sorry. I got him.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman will shop?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening, and we wish you best of luck on your project.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Yeah, thank you all. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. And with that, Mr. Secretary, I believe we are ready for number two on our agenda.
Yes, we are. Petition 2021-01-03-01, submitted by Anderson Eckstein Westrick, Inc., on behalf of Botsford General Hospital, pursuant to Section 12.08 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances of the City of Livonia. This is amended to determine whether or not to vacate an existing public easement at 39,007 Mile Road, located on the north side of 7 Mile Road, between the I-275-96 Expressway and Hagerty Road in the southwest quarter of Section 6.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This petition involves vacating an existing public water main easement. The location of this site is on the north side of 7 Mile Road, just west of I-275. This is currently under development by Beaumont Health Systems as an outpatient care center. The new professional medical building will be four and a half stories in height, and will have a gross floor area of about 162,000 square feet. The new building replaces the former office and manufacturing facility that was last occupied by A123 Systems. With the demolition of the old building and redevelopment of the site, most of the utilities are being relocated. This includes a water main, which renders the current easement no longer useful, and hence the reason for this request to vacate and remove it, and to prevent it from being an encumbrance on the property. So this plan shows where that water main easement is located on the property, which would be vacated. City Engineering Department has no objections to this request. I can read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have two, only two items. One is from the Department of Finance, dated January 26, indicating that they have no objections. That letter signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant, and then similar letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer, dated February 3, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions from any of the commissioners for Mr. Toramina? In regards to this? If not, is there anybody representing the petitioner in our audience tonight? If so, you can click the raise hand button. I'll make sure that you're recognized.
I don't believe that's the case, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I don't see anybody. This is a fairly small island in terms of almost a housekeeping-type petition that we deal with, but it is a public hearing, so we want to make sure we give anybody an opportunity to speak on it. So is there anyone else in our audience who wishes to speak for or against this vacating of this easement? I don't see anybody else raising their hand. Is... Well, I guess we've gone through everything, so I will ask for a, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Chairman?
Ooh, I heard a lot of folks on that one.
Let them go.
What's that, Mr. Long?
I said, let whoever else it was go.
All right. Well, I heard Mr. Bonjero as well, and I think Mrs. McQ.
I'll give it to the lady.
Okay, well, we'll go to Mrs. McQ then if she's.
Thank you. All right. All right. I just, I would like to offer an approving resolution that the request to vacate an existing public utility easement at 39,007 Mile Road is hereby approved for the following reasons: That the demolition of the old building and the redevelopment of the property as a new four-and-one-half stories professional medical building, this part of the easement is no longer needed for public utility purposes. Number two, that the work has been completed, and upon vacation of the old easement, a new easement will be recorded that encompasses the relocated sections of the utilities. And number three, no reporting city department or public utility is objected to the proposed vacating.
And support comes from?
Support.
I hear Mr. Bonjero on support. So we have a motion to approve by Mrs. McQ, and supported by Mr. Bonjero, with a lot of chivalry in there, which is always great. And if there's any, is there any discussion on the motion from any of the commissioners? If not, Mr. Secretary, please call a roll.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman will shop?
I vote aye as well, and the motion passes. We'll go on to City Council. So that takes care of our public hearing section of our agenda. We now move on to miscellaneous items. These are items that we have three of on our agenda, and the first one, I believe, is item number three, Mr. Secretary.
Petition 2020-11-08-06, submitted by Leo Sauve Building Company, requesting approval of the master deed, bylaws, and site plan, pursuant to Section 18.62 of the City of Livonia Ordinance Number 543, is amended to develop a site condominium, Roma Court, consisting of 32 single-family homes on the property of 37855 Linden Avenue, which is the former Webster Elementary School site, located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Newburgh and Hicks Roads in the southeast quarter of Section Number 19.
Thank you very much. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to develop a condominium subdivision, sometimes referred to as a site condominium, at the former Webster Elementary School site, which is on the south side of Linden between Newburgh and Hicks Roads. This property is in the process of being rezoned from PL, Public Land, to R1, one-family residential. City Council gave first reading to the zoning change on September 28, 2020. The R1 minimum lot size requirements are 7,200 square feet for lot area, 60 feet for lot width, and 120 feet for lot depth. As you can see from this map, the site is surrounded by R1 zoning and developed planted lots that are located in the Castle Gardens subdivision. The proposed site layout shows 32 lots or site condominium units, all of which meet the minimum R1 lot size requirements. The design includes a cul-de-sac extending south from Linden that would provide access to 22 of the 32 lots, identified on the plans as lots or units 11 through 32. Units 8, 9, and 10, which are shown in the northeast corner, would have direct access from Linden. Units 1 through 7 would have direct frontage on Mason, and those are located at the south end of the development. Along the east side of the subdivision, the plans show a stormwater detention basin that is part of a larger open space park. The detention system includes a forebay as well as a main storage basin. The basin would have an overall depth of about 6 feet and one-on-six side slopes to avoid the need for a fence. The street right-of-way, as shown, would be 60 feet wide and would have a 120-foot diameter cul-de-sac. For landscaping, the plan shows one tree per lot, as required by the city. Trees and shrubs are also shown along the perimeter of the open space park and detention basin. And in addition, parallel along the right-of-way of Linden on the two-corner lots at the main entrance to the subdivision, the plan shows evergreen and flowers. That's located here along Linden. In response to the commission's comments at the study meeting, the grading plan has been adjusted. The proposed site grades have been lowered about 3 and 1/2 feet. Additionally, the petitioner is willing to restrict along the west side of the development, the construction of ranch-style homes only. Your packet includes master deed and bylaws. These address various issues, including construction materials, as well as site of homes, as well as other improvements and outbuildings. I won't go over those details, but they're very typical for the developments that we've seen as of late. Now, I'll show you just some photographs or renderings of the types of homes that the petitioner intends to develop on this site. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Toramina.
First letter is from our Engineering Division, dated February 16, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The property is assigned the address of 37855 Linden Avenue. The legal description included on the plan submitted by the owner appears to be correct and should be used to describe the parcel. The proposed development is currently serviced by public water mains, storm, and sanitary sewers, and the submitted drawings indicate that new utility connections will be constructed to service the proposed parcel layout. Easements will need to be provided for the new water and sanitary sewers, as well as portions of the storm sewer that are to be maintained by the city. At this time, Exhibit B drawings have not been provided to show proposed easements, so we cannot determine if they proposed easements are correct. The proposed construction will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including detention requirements. Detention is shown on the preliminary plans, but no calculations are given. A full review of the proposed development will be completed when plans are submitted for permitting. It should be noted that the area of the proposed development has experienced issues with sanitary sewer backups during heavy storm situations in the past. Since that time, the city has been trying to mitigate flows, the flow issues by removing existing house-footing drain connections from the sewers to free up capacity. Per revised ordinances, the developer will be required to contribute towards funding future projects, further reducing the existing flows in the sewer system. With the projects that have been completed to date and future projects to reduce flows, there should not be any adverse effects to the existing sewer systems." That's a letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated January 29, that reads, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the request to construct site condominiums on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations: Using the City Livonia Department of Public Works Engineering Division Site Plan Design Standards, page 11 of 32, as a guide, fire hydrant spacing for multiple single-family home sites must, at a maximum, be spaced every 500 feet. The distance from the entry of the site condominiums to the proposed hydrant location, as indicated on the site plan, exceeds this distance. The Livonia Fire Department Fire Inspection Division will be requiring an additional fire hydrant be located near the entry to the proposed site." That letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Excuse me. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police, signed by Sergeant Shapansky, Sergeant in the Traffic Bureau, that's dated January 28. A letter of no objection from the Inspection Department dated December 10, and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection from our Department of Finance, dated February 3, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer, dated February 3, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions of any of the commissioners for our planning staff? I don't see any questions from any of the commissioners. Our petitioner, I believe, is in the audience. Mr. Suave, is there anyone else here with the petitioner this evening? If so, please click raise hand so that we can recognize you. And we'll go to Mr. Suave to start.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission members. Enrico Suave. Address, as you required, 37771, 7 Mile Road, Sweet Sea, Livonia. Also, in tonight's attendance on the line is our civil engineer for the project, Mr. Fadi Khalil. Mark, thank you for your presentation this evening. As he correctly stated, this is a conforming R1 site condominium, which is also in harmony with the surrounding areas. This development will mirror Heritage Square, which is about a mile north from the proposed development. Housing will be primarily the same, very similar. Minimum-size homes would be 1,600 square foot for the ranches and exceeding 1,900 square foot approximately for colonials. Also, the brick requirements will be in conformance with the city ordinance and exactly the same as Heritage Square that we just finished up to the north. Mr. Khalil, if you have anything to add to this at this time?
No, I just want to say, my name is Fadi Khalil, and I'm from Angle Design. The address is 6200 Chafford Road. That's in Dearborn, Michigan. And you spoke about it. I mean, you said everything that you want to say, but we're conforming with everything like Wayne County, and we looked at the comments. We're adding the fire hydrant as required by the fire department, and the easements, the exhibit, it's going to be provided, showing all the easements for all the utilities. So, and I think that's basically what we have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Khalil and Mr. Suave. Do we have any questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Water, sure.
I know Mark read out the self-imposition of ranch-style homes on the west side of the property. When we looked at this, we're willing to encumber units 24 through 30, which we believe would be the only ones really impacted by any major change in topography. So to reiterate, units 24 through 30 were the ones we'd be agreeing to self-impose that ranch requirement on.
Okay, we appreciate that, Mr. Suave. And will any of these units, either those or any of the other ones, due to the grade, be either a daylight-style basement or a walkout?
Maybe, maybe a daylight, but Fadi would be more learned to answer that question than I would at this time.
Yeah, just now we're working. I mean, we just lowered the road by 3 and 1/2 feet. Like, some of them, they're going to have a daylight. On the, on the east side, actually, we're going to have, like, almost, like, it's not, it's not a walkout. It's like high daylight. It's like almost 6 feet. Like, you're going to have clear. On the west side, now it's tight. We might have, just at the end, by the cul-de-sac, we might have two or three lots that we might have, like, 3 or 4 feet daylight.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Any, any question, any other questions from any of the commissioners? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item? Either for or against? If so, you can click raise hand. I don't see anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item. If there's no other questions or comments from any of our commissioners, a motion would be in order.
Chairman?
Mr. Ventura?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to develop a site condominium, Roma Court, on the property at 37855 Linden Avenue, formerly Webster Elementary School, is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval, in the following conditions: Number one, that the site plan identified as drawing number CS100, dated November 19, 2020, prepared by Angle Design and Engineering LLC, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the landscape plan identified as LP1 and the landscape notes and details, identified as LP2, both dated November 13, 2020, prepared by Nagy Dublin Land Design, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, that the condominium master deed and bylaws comply with the requirements of the Subdivision Control Ordinance Title 16, Chapter 16.04 through 16.40 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances, and Article 20, Section 20.01 through 20.06 of Zoning Ordinance Number 543. Number four, that the master deed and bylaw shall include language in the building and use restrictions that require the homes along the west side of the cul-de-sac to be a maximum of one-story at height. And I would amend that to include the lot numbers that Mr. Sauve indicated he would encumber. Number five, that the brick used in the construction of each condominium unit shall be full-face 4-inch brick. Number six, in the event of a conflict between the provisions set forth in the master deed and bylaws... Number six, in the event of a conflict between the provisions set forth in the master deed and bylaws and the requirements set forth in the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number five four three as amended, the zoning ordinance requirement shall prevail, and the provision, petitioner shall comply with the zoning ordinance requirements. Number seven, that only a conforming entrance marker is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number eight, that the petition shall include language in the master deed and bylaws or a separate recordable instrument, wherein the Condominium Association shall reimburse the City of Livonia for any maintenance or repair cost incurred for the stormwater detention retention and outlet facilities. And given the city of, giving the City of Livonia the right to impose liens on each lot owner's property pro rata and place said charges on their real estate tax bills in the event said charges are not paid by the Condominium Association or each lot owner within thirty days of billing for the City of Livonia. Number nine, that all required cash deposits, certified checks, irrevocable bank letters of credit and/or certi-bonds, which shall be established by the city engineer pursuant to article number eighteen of ordinance number five four three, section eighteen dot six six of the ordinance shall be deposited within the city prior to the issuance of engineering permits for this site condominium development. And number ten, pursuant to section nineteen dot ten of ordinance number five four three, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval shall be valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council. And unless building permit, a building permit is obtained, the supermole shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Is there support for the motion?
Port.
I hear Mr. Long for support. Uh, Mr. Suave, I just want to clarify, I believe you said that those units were twenty-four through thirty-two that you would, uh, agree to ranches on. Is that correct?
I'll unmute myself. No, I think I said twenty-four through thirty.
Twenty-four through thirty, okay. I just want to make sure that we have that clear.
Twenty-four through thirty, yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure that that is, uh, added to the approving motion as Mr. Ventura has requested. Is there any, uh, conversation, any discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bongero.
Just on, on condition number eight, ju, you know, how the, with the, um, really to impose liens from the city. I guess this would go to Mark. Is it be, is it just because we know that there's a problem with, um, there has been a problem in the past with flooding in that area? So it's imperative that that detention pond is serviced regularly, right? So if the city comes in and they've got a service that they're gonna charge the, the association. So I don't know, is there like an agreement that's gonna be an annual, like an annual service on it? You know what I mean? Is that why the condition's worded like that, I guess?
Mr. Toramina, you can unmute yourself.
That is standard language of, for these types of projects. It's not, it's not, it's, it's language that's not u- unique to, to this development, I will say, number one, so. Uh, and whether or not this area experiences flooding problems, that, that, um, what was referenced earlier, um, it, it does not have bearing on this particular, uh, condition um, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, the sanitary sewer issue. So, uh, this relates to the maintenance of the stormwater management basin, I believe, and if there's a failure to maintain that, then the city has the right to go in there, uh, perform the maintenance, and then, uh, charge that back, uh, to the, uh, to the owners uh, within the, uh, within the development. Uh, and that, that only, that only happens in circumstances where there's been a failure to maintain it. It's not something, I, I'm not aware of there being an annual service check or anything like that.
Okay. I know we kind of ran into it in our neighborhood, and so that's why I was just inquiring about it. Okay.
I think it's in the event that there's any issues, city will inspect it, and, uh, if they require uh, maintenance, uh, to be performed and, and there's a failure to do so, that's when that provision, uh, kicks in.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bongero. That was a good question. Any other, uh, questions or comments regarding this motion? If not, uh, Mr. Secretary, uh, please call a roll on the motion to approve.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McQ.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Chair Magna votes aye. Chair Will Shop.
Votes aye, and the motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with the approving recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Suave and Mr. Khalil for coming tonight.
Thank you all.
And we wish you well on your project.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Secretary, we have, uh, one more item on our agenda before we go to our minutes.
This is to request an extension of petition two zero one four dash zero two dash zero eight dash zero two, which previously received approval by City Council on April twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, by Council Resolution one oh four dash one four to construct a one-story office research building in Victor East on property at three seven six four zero Seven Mile Road, located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Newburgh Road and Victor Parkway in the southeast quarter of section six.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. This is a request to extend site plan approval for the development of a flex-type office project, which is at the corner of Seven Mile Road and Victor Parkway. Uh, the property in question is about six point four acres in size, and the name given to the project is Victor East. The original site plan for Victor East was approved in two thousand and fourteen. Victor East involves the development of a single-story fifty-four thousand square foot office building. And prior to two thousand and fourteen, uh, the site has a long history connected with, uh, with this project that began in the mid nineteen nineties, uh, with Oakwood Hospital. Uh, the Oakwood proposal eventually led to a lawsuit, uh, and then a consent judgment that was entered in nineteen ninety-eight. Neither no, nor, neither Oakwood nor, uh, a subsequent approval of a hundred thousand square foot office building wherever construction, wherever built, uh, which led to the two thousand and fourteen approval of Victor East. Uh, and that was made possible via a third amendment to the consent judgment. Since then, Victor East, uh, has been extended four times. The most recent occurred on April ninth of twenty eighteen, at which time Council granted a three-year extension. This marks the fifth request to extend, uh, the site plan. And in a letter dated January fourteenth from Josh Swardini, the Vice President of Edken Management, Victor, uh, East LLC is requesting that the site plan be approved for an additional thirty-six months. And I believe Josh is on the call this evening and can provide additional information. Thank you. Uh, two items of correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Both letters of no objection, coming, one coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and, uh, from the Department of Finance dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And that's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? There's no questions of our planning staff. Mr. Swardini is on the call this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Josh Swardini with Edken, one fifty West Second Street, Royal Oak. Um, yeah, uh, just coming, uh, in front of you guys again tonight for simple approval extension of the site plan approval as Mark indicated, um, for this fifty-four thousand square foot, single-story office building.
Okay, is there any questions of any of the commissioners for our petitioner? I don't think so. We've seen this a number of times, and, uh, Mr. Swardini, we appreciate you coming and continuing to represent, uh, Edken and this property.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And all right, let's see if we can, uh, uh, first ask if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against the site. Want to make sure we give that opportunity. I don't see anyone else raising their hand. Uh, so I will go to the commissioners and ask if there is a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. McQ.
Like to offer an approving resolution that the request for an extension, Council Resolution number one oh four dash fourteen, which permitted the construction of a one-story office research building on pro, on property at three seven six four zero Seven Mile Road, is hereby approved subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the request for an extension of waiver use approval by Edken Management LLC in a letter dated January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, is hereby approved for a three-year period. And number two, that all conditions imposed by Council Resolution number one oh four dash fourteen in connection with petition two thousand fourteen dash two dash zero eight dash zero two, which permitted the construction of a one-story office research building, shall remain in effect to the extent that they are not in conflict with the foregoing condition.
And is there support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. McQ, supported by Mr. Bongero. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mrs. McQ.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
For no, Magna votes aye. Chair Will Shop.
Votes aye, and motion passes, and then we'll go on to City Council. Thank you, Mr. Swardini, for, uh, coming this evening, and, uh, we hope you can find some, uh, someone that wants to bite on that property.
Thank you. Yep, we're out there trying. Appreciate you guys. Have a great night.
You do the same. Thank you for coming. And, uh, Mr. Secretary, that takes us, uh, to the last item on our agenda.
And it takes us to the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and sixty-fourth public hearing, a regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I show all members were present. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes.
By Mrs. Smiley, supported by.
Support.
Port. Is McQ. And, uh, if there is no objection, uh, we do have all seven members here. Uh, if there's no objection from any of them, I'm gonna ask that our secretary show, uh, seven to approve the minutes with Mrs. Smiley and Mrs. McQ, uh, making that motion. Uh, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission this evening? If not, uh, I would say a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I move we adjourn.
And support by.
Port.
All right, we have Mrs. Smiley, and I heard Mr. Long first, so, uh, that is on the motion to adjourn. Uh, is there any discussion, any reason why anyone else to debate the adjournment? Not, uh, again, I think we can safely show seven, uh, to adjourn our meeting tonight. And that will conclude our meeting, uh, at eight twenty-three PM. I would like to thank Livonia Television staff, uh, for bringing, for their contribution and bringing this, uh, meeting to our community as well. And with no further business, we will adjourn the meeting again at eight twenty-three PM. Good night, Livonia. Stay safe and have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.